Good evening. It is now 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. I'd like to call a zoning public hearing meeting to order.
Brenham?
Sorry.
Pew?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Teresa? Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Eileen?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Don't have anyone online?
Yeah, Teresa.
Okay, I couldn't see. Um, yes, there she is. We just want to recognize Councilwoman Teresa attending this evening, um, online. Thank you. Next is item three additions and deletions to the agenda.
There are none.
Thank you, Director Price. Item four is withdrawals or deferrals. Hearing done. Moving on to item five, which is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening, Director Price?
No, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
The motion is second for approval of adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item six, open public hearing. Six A is map amendments for action.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
Uh, before we open the public hearing, may I have a point of personal privilege?
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know that there are a lot of people here to discuss case one, which is the Garner's Ferry Road and Starling Goodson property. And so, we are gonna have that public hearing because I very much want to hear the feedback from everyone in the community. I just wanted to make sure everyone knows in advance. Some people have asked me, and we've talked about this, that my plan is to have the public meeting, the public hearing rather, here tonight. And then, when it comes up for a vote, I'm going to move that we defer first reading, which is the vote that would normally happen to approve or deny, because I know that there's a lot more conversation that still needs to happen about this item. So, I'll mention that again later, but wanted to tell everybody upfront. So, if you came here to speak about it, you're in the right place. I'm glad you're here to speak about it. This is your time. Just wanted to let you know how I'm going to vote at the end of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, six A one, case number twenty-five dash zero-one-one MA, Mark James, agricultural to rural crossroads, five point nine-three acres, one-one-four-eight-one Garner's Ferry Road, TMS number R three-five-two-zero-zero dash zero-nine dash one-one, portion of, planning commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan is compliant. This public hearing is now-
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, planning commission recommends disapproval.
Alright, hold on please. The one that I have is different.
Madam Chair, I will give you the cor- you, you have the one that I gave you with a little more information on it-
Yes.
-is the one with the incorrect, um, recommendations of the planning commission and the conference board. But we'll give you the, this is the one everyone has. So, what was sent out is correct, and the one that everyone else has. You can use the previous sheet I gave you, which is the information.
Okay. Alright, so to reiterate, what I read was wrong, everybody. What I have is not correct, but the one that was published and the one that is on the screen is correct. So, we'll read it again for the record. Case number twenty-five dash zero-one-one, Mark James, agricultural to rural crossroads, one-one-four-eight-one Garner's Ferry Road, TMS R three-five-two-zero-zero dash zero-nine dash one-one, planning commission, disapproval, comprehensive plan, non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pew, do we have any individuals that signed up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have thirteen people who signed up to speak. We have six for and seven against. When I call your name, please approach the nearest podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak. First, we have Ms. Joyce Delk, and I also want to put a disclaimer out there. If I butcher your name, please don't be disappointed with me. I've been trying to best my ability. Ms. Joyce Delk? Ms. Delk, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am. Good evening. Like I said, my name is Joyce Delk. I'm at two-one-two Wilson McCord Road in Eastover. I would like to say I just, I, I approve the DG market because of the rural area that we live in, and we don't have anything there. And we need to start something. We have to go distant to get anything. So, I'm at the crossroads of six oh-one and three seventy-eight. So, um, I, I sincerely approve the DG market, and I hope we get one. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Delk. Next, we have Ms. Margaret Sumter. Ms. Sumter, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Margaret Sumter. Address is seven oh-nine Harmon Road, Hopkins, South Carolina. I am in favor of the DG market, and the reason is because I work with a lot of seniors. Seniors in that Lower Richland community that can't get to Food Lion or Walmart. They don't have the transportation, or if they get transportation, they gotta pay somebody ten dollars to get them there. I have calls all the time from seniors. I need water, I need milk, I need juice. So, you know what? I go and I take it to them, and I use my money. I have been working in the community with the developers, talking to different people in the community. There are seniors that want this, but they're not able to be here tonight because they live too far out, they don't have the transportation to get here. So, I know what it's like because I work with the seniors that when it's needed in that community, I can go to Food Lion. I can go to Public Service on Rosewood Drive, but let's think about those that, um, don't have the transportation, it's not as fortunate as we are, that can't get to those stores unless they pay someone some money. So, I'm asking you to please consider passing this. We have seniors that sometime go to Piglet Wigglet in Sumter. I've talked to people on six oh-one down the county, um, line, almost to Camden, and you know what? They want this, but they're not here tonight because they don't have the transportation to get here. So, think about the pe- think about what we like to see, the little people. Let's think about the people, let's have a heart and think about those people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sumter. Madam Chair, next we have Greg Googler. Sir, if you could approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Certainly. My name's Greg Goojer. Uh, I, uh, my address is one oh-one North Pine Street, Spartanburg, South Carolina. And, um, I'm the developer that, that is working on this project. We've been working on it for a good number of months now, and I want to thank everybody that, uh, has, has welcomed me to this community and has helped, um, uh, Ms. Newton for hosting a, uh, a, uh, community meeting and allowing us to speak and, and, um, sharing with us what's important to the community. Representative Johnson and Representative Reese have gotten involved with this and have promised to help us with, uh, interfacing with DOT for access on Garner's Ferry Road. Our access won't be on Garner's Ferry Road, but to make sure the Changang Road is safe, with an additional retail space there. And, um, we even have had, um, a councilman, Washington, from Sumter County, uh, show his support. And, um, we've worked on projects in Sumter County with him before, and of course, his district and this district back up to each other. And so, this site would benefit a lot of the people in his district also. The key is that it's a food desert out there. It's ten miles to Food Lion. And so, there are not good options for fresh produce, fresh meats, and this will be a DG market store. And so, it, it emphasized more groceries. You have a hand out there that has some pretty pictures, you can see what we're talking about. And also, we are looking at just rezoning the very front of this parcel that fronts Garner's Ferry Road. We, people have gotten nervous that we're trying to, um, uh, rezone that entire field, and that's not the case. Um, it's only the frontage on Garner's Ferry Road. The other thing that I've learned about this community is that there are some politics going on, and, um, I just welcome everybody to listen-
To Googler, that's your time, sir.
The seniors need this, and I'd encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Malcolm Taylor. Dr. Taylor, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Dr. Malcolm Taylor, thirteen seventy-two Antioch MS Church Road, Eastover, South Carolina. So, the Honorable Counsel, I thank you for this privilege to stand in this place tonight. I hosted a meeting last night in my community. I've been very apt about getting this project off the ground, as I concur with the other constituents. We do live in an area where food is scarce. We are in a desert area. I left here in nineteen eighty-eight, graduated, I moved away. I came back in two thousand fifteen, and our area has not changed. It is a drought. I passed to a church in that area, and our seniors constantly tell me we need more. Last night, I had about twenty-five phone calls calling me, even this morning at six-thirty, people who attended the meeting. Last night, we had over a hundred people at that meeting. I'm sure ninety-five percent of that group is in support. They were calling me this morning saying, "We need this, we with you all the way because our community needs it." I just want to ask this board tonight, I'm all about growth and development. Our community deserves that, our people deserve that. We don't need any more liquor stores, we don't need any more cigarette shops, we need places of growth and development. And most of us all know that development is coming that way. I advise my community, get into it now where you can be a part of the growth, be a part of the development, and see our community benefit. It's a benefit for everybody. People might oppose it right now, but I promise you, the same people who oppose it will be right there shopping because it's close proximity to everything. So, I ask you tonight, would you approve this to make my community, which I love so much, make it a better community? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Next, we have Lori Gregory. Ms. Gregory, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Gregory. I live at one oh-eight Starling Goodson Road in Hopkins, South Carolina. And I am in favor of the DG market. Even though I don't live in an area where I would probably use it, I'm in favor of it because, as previously stated, our seniors are more in need of a place that's more convenient for them and close to them so that they have access to food and they don't have to drive as far to get there. I'm also in favor of growth in the Lower Richland area because we need that. As stated earlier, Lower Richland is growing, and we, we got to get on board with that. So, I am in favor of the DG market. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Next, we have Marlin James. Mr. James, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Mark James, and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you tonight. And, and thank you for your service and consideration. Um, this is, uh, no, no small feat for y'all, and the time you spend is, is, is very much appreciated. Um, I'm, I'm referenced as the applicant. I'm a, um, a, a agent on this project, a consultant on this project, and have been working with Mr. Goojer of Co- Coastal Development Partners on this from, from the beginning. This thing started, um, I guess back in, uh, end of, end of last year. And, um, and I've been thoroughly impressed and appreciated the effort and the faultfulness that he has been through in this process. My, my goal here is, is to try to head off a couple of, uh, of things that I think are, have been reservations that have been expressed to us. We, we submitted our application to rezone on January thirty-first. On March third was our, uh, pub- planning commission meeting. Frankly, we probably had not done enough work before that meeting. There was a negative vote by planning commission. There were a number of folks who showed up, many of who were here tonight, uh, who I didn't know at that time, but I now know many of them by name, and I would, and, and hopefully, uh, they would, uh, appreciate the fact that we've took that opportunity to defer after that planning commission meeting. And we've had four full neighborhood meetings, town hall type meetings. We have had numerous meetings with everyone from the mayor and the magistrate of Eastover to, uh, several meetings with Councilwoman and Jermaine Johnson. Uh, Representative Reese has been engaged. So, we've, we've done our, our, our best effort to try to have some outreach and get a feel for what's happening in this community and where the faults are on this thing.
Mr. James, that's your time, sir. But before you leave the podium, could you please state your address for me?
Thirty-one oh-one Divine Street.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Okay, alright. Got too, got too talkative. I apologize.
Problem. Alright, next we have, uh, Donald Simmons?
Simons.
Simmons, okay.
Been before y'all many times over the years, but I've never been called Simmons.
I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Donald Simmons. I live at two fifteen Willie Wilson in Eastover, within walking distance of the proposed, uh, the DG. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One, tonight, uh, I went to the meeting with my dear cousin Malcolm over here last night. Now, there was not a majority of the people, the people that spoke, spoke mostly against the Dollar General. Now, I don't know the hearts of those that didn't speak, but those that spoke, spoke against it, and I have quite a few people that can back that up here. Another thing is, we, we live in a rural area, and we live in a rural area for a reason, because we want to be in a rural area. Where you proposing Garner's Ferry Road from Mr. Bunkers down to six oh-one, people come through there every morning running eight, seventy-five and eighty miles an hour, all day long. You know, we used to drive the track up and down Garner's Ferry Road, but you can't do that anymore. I ask you to follow the recommendation of the zoning de- department. They recommend that you reject it, and majority of the people that I talked to asked that you reject it. You talk about getting food. My daughter ordered DoorDash. DoorDash, which is right within walking distance, it only costs a dollar and eighty-three cent. You can't, you can't buy, you can't go to Food Lion for a dollar and eighty-three cent from down there. So, if you desperately want to get something, DoorDash will gladly bring it to you, real cheap. But I urge you, please, vote against the rezoning of the property. The pro- the problems that we have with traffic, they need to be corrected before we have anything else put in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Simon. Next, we have Tammy Young. Ms. Young, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Tammy Young. I live at twelve thirty-two RL Coward Road. I just got on board with this, and I just found out about it, so I, I wish I had more research, but I'm against it, and for the same reason. The speed limit out on Garner's Ferry is ridiculous. I used to work at Bunkers, and I actually tried to get a red light at Bunkers, between Bunkers and Garner's Ferry Road. And at that time, they told me that there had to be so many deaths in a, in an area before they'll put a, put a light out. I can't say if that's true or not, but that, that, that was absurd to me. I even told the lady, "Wha- how do you put life on a line? There has to be so many number of deaths. These are gonna be our children that are gonna die." Another reason I don't like this, this is a franchise. I worked at Dollar General myself. They get robbed all the time. They're not looking out for the people that work there, they're not protecting them. So, this is gonna, again, be our children, our cousins, our mothers, our fathers, you know, working at the store that's gonna get robbed. Um, I just don't want to see deaths happen there. Um, I'm, I'm again, I'm, I'm all for growth, it's a wonderful thing, um, but this is not what we need in our area. We do love our rural community, we love the community, we, it's country, it's, people look out for one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next, we have Dr. Favors. Ma'am, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Alrighty, my name is Dr. Tattnisha Favor. I'm a medical doctor. I live at one zero seven four Pablo Drive in Eastover, South Carolina. I am against the, um, Dollar General, the DG, um, store. First, I want to say that I agree with the judge that last night's meeting was overstated. The majority of the people there that at least spoke up were not for this business. So, I'm not really sure why that was stated. Number two, I also understand that a certain person in our community decided to collaborate with the news stations to come, come across as if this is something that the majority of us in Eastover want, and I thought that was very disingenuous. So, a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I do work with seniors. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I see a lot of baby boomers. I work with them directly. What they need is good quality foods. A lot of our seniors, especially our black seniors, suffer from hypertension, heart disease, strokes, diabetes because of the type of foods that are in the, this DG store. You can go to Whole Foods and have it delivered to your house. I live in Eastover, I'm in a rural community. They delivered it for free. You can get fresh fruits and vegetables, organic foods, not stuff that's covered in preservatives causing your hypertension to get even worse. I think these are things that we need to think about and think outside the box. I know we think about driving and having to go pick up groceries, but in modern day, you don't have to do that. DoorDash, um, Ubers, Whole Foods, they will come to your house, Amazon, they will come to your house. So, I think the day of driving out somewhere is actually over. But anyway, I am concerned about safety. Safety is an issue. How many people have gotten killed on Garner's Ferry? How many crosses are out there? If we haven't gotten a red light from Mr. Bunkers yet, a red light from the Center Express, what makes us think that all of a sudden we're magically gonna have a red light because the DG store has appeared? I don't think that they're considering our safety. Um, also, I think that, um, again, we're in the agricultural area. I'm a beekeeper. Um, I do have bees in the area.
That's your time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Lynn Rankin. Ma'am, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Ranky. I live at eleven thirty Changang Road, Eastover, South Carolina. I'd like to thank you first for letting us have the opportunity to speak, and I'd also like to thank the members of the planning commission for their review and their recommendation to the county council. I'd like to thank everyone who has planned or participated in the numerous community meetings. But I'd like to go over some things that I have learned in this journey. Richland County has a comprehensive plan. Lower Richland Community Strategic Master Plan is part of that. The conservation plan and the preservation plan are also part of the Richland County plans. All of these plans provide guidance for development and growth within Richland County with input from the community. There are no public utilities that exist at this location. The roads are hazardous at the intersections of Highway three seventy-eight and Changang. The DG market is seeking two to two-point-five of the acreage, and they're asking to rezone five point nine-three acreage on their application. No information has been provided to us to what may be developed on the remaining acreage. Dollar General, the regular Dollar General, is located at the opposite end of Changang, four miles. Safer commute for us residents residing on Changang. The new DG market would increase the ta- traffic flow on Changang traveling both directions. It will also impede the traffic flow exiting Changang onto three seventy-eight. It has the potential to impede the traffic following, fol- coming off of three seventy-eight onto Changang because we also have farmers there that sometimes drive their equipment up and down Changang. There is no South Carolina DOT commitment for public safety enhancements.
That's your time, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Ms. Peggy Simon. Ms. Simon, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Sure. Um, my name's Peggy Simon, four oh-five East Fair Drive, Columbia, South Carolina two nine two zero nine. So, I'm here to express my strong opposition to the request to rezone this parcel of land, which is near my childhood home and my church. Um, I remind you that the March third planning commission meeting regarding this request, Commissioner Johnson emphasized the importance of considering the long-term implications of zoning changes. Allowing this rezoning risks undermining the rural character of our community and invites unwanted commercial development. My concerns are not about the specific business requesting this change, but about the broader impact on our community, including potential harm to existing businesses in Eastover and increased traffic risk on Highway three seventy-eight. Furthermore, the mayor of Eastover is also against this request, highlighting a shared community concern. While I recognize that development in Lower Richland is necessary, it must be done thoughtfully to reflect our rural values. We support the county's twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan and want to ensure our input shapes the future growth in a way that aligns with our community's wishes to better plan future developments like this one and on, on the request. Ultimately, the critical question regarding this matter is not whether or not we need more grocery services, but whether this rezoning request aligns with our community's vision for development in that area, and the answer is no, it does not. I urge this council to deny the rezoning request to preserve the integrity of our lands and community. And since I have twenty-five seconds left, my father wanted me to remind you all that two other people in support of this who spoke tonight only live in the actual area. The others do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Next, we have Tony Robertson. Mr. Robertson, you have, if you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir. Mr. Robertson, you have, if you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Yes, sir, and it's Tony G. Robinson, B.I.N. It's fine. I'm in opposing decision to have this Dollar General. I'm against it.
State your address for us, please.
Forty-six Ravenburg Road. Sorry about that. You'll hear me say a couple of things that you've heard a couple of people say prior to me being against it because of the crime rate. That is a big thing that I'm against. I'm a big advocate against crime. I served as a state constable for two years for our state back in oh five to oh seven. I dealt with a lot of juveniles that have committed crimes and continue to commit crimes after serving their sentences, being rehabilitated. Also, being from Eastover, I remember when there was only one store in Eastover, Richland Supplies. Anybody remember that? And things went well even back then. You can look at the crime rate then compared to now, and you'll see a big difference as far as a lot of our people committing crimes. Also, I forgot if it was Lynn or Tammy, but they commented on the fact of a Dollar General being like four miles away from this rezoning to have a Dollar General. Decision against it is like, hey, four miles, that's not a big difference as far as going and getting things that you need from the store. Also, it was spoken of people being in the country and in the rural area. They're there, you know, for a reason. They want to be away from the city and not in the area where, you know, it's commercialized and having a lot, a lot of the hustle and bustle. So me being against it, I think we'll continue to make Eastover a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have John Fable. James Fable. Yes, sir. Mr. Fable, if you could come down, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Hello, how's everybody? Good, 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 very good. My name is Jim Fable. I'm mayor of the town of Eastover. How are you all doing? Thank you very much for, for having us, and this has been...
Can you state your address for us, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
James Fable, five twenty-five Man Street in Eastover. Two things I want to say, since you've only given us, you know, politicians can stick a whole lot of time, so I'm going to try to stick to these two minutes you gave me, sir. One of the things we're trying to do in Eastover is to try to redevelop Eastover. That's the critical thing we need to do. And one of the key, we did a survey, and one of the key, the most information we received is that Eastover wants a whole holistic grocery store, a store that will be able to have everything that we need, similar to a small food line. That's what we're trying to develop in the town of Eastover. Secondly, if you put the Dollar General where, where it's being discussed, it will have a negative impact in terms of the traffic that we have coming to, to the stores that we do have currently in Eastover. So the whole notion about creating a whole new Dollar General without having a holistic store, it's going, it's, it's, it's not, it's going to take away from, from what we're trying to do in, in the town. Secondly, is this, there was some discussion about seniors can't get what they want. No, that's not the case. We, we, we make sure that if the seniors don't have access to transportation, we find it, we make sure that they get what they need in the town. One of the things, one of the things that I said when I was elected was this, we want to make sure that we take care of our seniors. So if there's a single senior in the town needs to get to the doctor, we make sure to get to the doctor. If they have, and one of the things that I do every month, I make sure that the seniors have water. We buy water, and we make sure that they have certain things that the basics they try to need. So the idea that the seniors can't get what they want is a kind of like, kind of like fallacious. They can't get the service that they need. We have one of the best health centers in the town. When people come to the health center, they come to the Dollar General in Eastover. They, 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 they do two things at the same time. So I would encourage you all, and as, as a developer, businessman, I would encourage you all, please, consider not having this new Dollar General.
Mr. Mayor, that's your time, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I heard. That was you?
That was me.
Okay. Can I close the public hearing, or you want to talk while the public, while it's open? Yes, sir, we recognize.
Can I say that? Because just listening to what Ms. Newton said she intended to do, I think she mentioned the word defer, but it sounds like she wanted to keep the public hearing open if she wanted to defer the vote, because if you close it, you have to vote. So... And the full council doesn't meet until after the vote would be done regarding this or any issue on tonight's agenda. So if you want, if you don't want the council to not vote tonight on this matter, you have to keep the public hearing open. So it will go until the next zoning public hearing.
May I ask a point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Yes, you recognize.
Thank you. And so I heard what you said, and this is what I was asking you about earlier today. So just to be clear, so the plan was to defer first reading?
Well, the re...
So have the public hearing and defer first reading?
Well, council would vote on it, but it's only vote, you can't vote on it until after you vote tonight, determine whether it goes forward or not. And that would be at a council meeting. So if, so that's the thing, is that if you want them to, if you want to close the public hearing, you have a vote, you have a vote tonight, and then it goes to full council at a later meeting. A council meeting, not a zoning public hearing meeting.
I'm sorry, so for clarification, so hypothetically, we close the public hearing, and there is a motion made to defer until such and such meeting date. You're saying that that is not something that can be done?
I'm saying, if you close the, the public hearing, then you would take a vote on the whether, because you, because you're not deferring the hearing because you've already had the hearing. So if you want to not vote tonight, then you have to keep it open.
Councilwoman Newton, did you have additional questions?
No, I don't.
Any further discussion before I close the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to defer first reading of this item until our September sixteenth meeting.
Second. Sorry, just a pause. Can action take while this public hearing is still open?
You can keep the public hearing open, but you have to, if you close it, you have to vote, and it's not, you can't defer the vote and have the hearing. You already had the hearings. So the hearing is what the people spoke, so if you want to not vote on it, if, which I'm thinking you, what you mean is tonight, you don't want, you want to defer to vote, is what you're saying?
That was the plan.
Okay, so if you want to defer to vote or not vote tonight, then you have to hold, keep the public hearing open. If you close it, then you have to vote to determine whether you're going to be for or against it tonight.
Right. Well, the chair didn't close the public hearing, and so I'm, and so I made my...
So you're voting to defer?
That was the motion that I made.
So basically, you want to vote to, you want to have the public hearing remain, remain open, is what you're saying? Not defer?
Apparently, I do. This is... I swear I asked about this before this meeting, just for this eventuality.
I'm, I'm sorry, just for clarification. I know there was a motion, there was a second, we're in discussion. My discussion was just making sure procedurally this was correct. I got confirmation that this was correct, and to take a motion while this is still open, I think the question at hand now is, is your motion worded correctly?
I think, yeah. My understanding is your, your motion, you want to let the public hearing remain open until a, a, a future day.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion. I move to let the public hearing remain open and to defer first reading until September sixteenth. Does the second accept that?
I can't remember who that was.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Wait, I'm sorry, can, one more?
Yes, please.
I apologize.
Yes.
This was different than I was expecting. For, for the public that's here, thank you, everybody that came to speak tonight. Thank you to the people who came to the town hall that I hosted. I take all rezoning decisions very seriously, as those of you who've attended previous discussions know. As you can probably tell by the people who've attended here tonight, in the community, opinions are actually split. And every time I talk to somebody, they always tell me that everybody that they talk to feels the same way that they do. But in my experience, everybody calls me, and the fact of the matter is that there is a split. And as we look at the comprehensive plan that we're in the process of updating, it is supposed to reflect the vision of the community. And so the reason that I have asked to defer this vote is because I think that there are still additional conversations that need to be, to happen, even for people that completely disagree, that never think they'll agree, and people who are completely for it, who never think they'll feel differently. What we do as a community is we come together and talk, and then we at least all feel good that we were heard. And so for every person that came to speak tonight, there are probably twenty-five other people that called me to express their feelings, and it's just really clear that we need to have more conversations about this. And so that's why I'm taking the action that I'm taking tonight, because I do take your feedback very seriously. And you've got a lot of neighbors who aren't here, who still have questions, who still want to talk, and I want to make sure that we create an opportunity for that. Now, I wish that it had operated a little smoother in terms of providing you that opportunity, but you'll continue to hear from me about this, because, again, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're reflecting the vision of our community, and that just requires more conversation. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Mia. Councilwoman Teresa, you're recognized online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to clarify that since we're not closing the public hearing, there will be opportunity for folks to come in at our next zoning public hearing for this item.
Attorney Wright, you recognize.
Madam Chair, if the body determines that they want to hear more people at the next hearing, or next meeting, they can, if the body so chooses.
Councilwoman Teresa, did I answer your question?
Thank you. Would we need to vote on, to make that happen? I just want to make sure that if we need to make that more clear, that we go ahead and do that.
No, you don't have to vote. The public hearing's still open, so when we, when you come back on the sixteenth, until the chair closes the hearing, it's open.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Letho?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, everyone. That was a little bit more conversation than normal, but I think we got there. All right, I'm going to give a few minutes for these people to exit, and then I'll read the next case number. Six A two, case number twenty-five dash zero one nine M.A. General Commercial to Light Industrial, three point one seven acres, four six five zero and four six five six Leesburg Road, TMS number R three one zero zero one dash zero one dash zero one, and R three one zero zero one dash zero one dash zero five. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan, noncompliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one person that signed up to speak, and that's the applicant, Kathleen McDaniels. Ms. McDaniels, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen McDaniel. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and my address at my law firm is nine twelve Ladies Street, down in the Vista. Thank you all for having us here tonight. I sent you all on Friday a packet via email explaining why we believe that this property should be rezoned and that rezoning of the property is in the best interest of the county. There are obviously lots of concerns that folks have when you take a property from General Commercial to Light Industrial. But what I've tried to outline in the packet that I provided was that there are inherent limitations within the land use code itself that will protect the surrounding community from any of the negative effects. Well, I can't say any, but for the vast majority of the negative effects, if the property is rezoned for Light Industrial. Because we certainly understand that while we have a wonderful organization there, we have to look to the future about what use could be made of the property if we ever left. Those limitations are that if it goes to manufacturing, assembly fabrication intensive, there's only one use that could be made, and that'd be game processing. And for the manufacturing, assembly fabrication general, there is inherent limitation of city and sewer and water service being four and six miles away at this time, with no plan for those utilities to be provided anytime in the foreseeable future. Finally, the loss to this community would be significant. My clients spent over six months trying to identify a location. This was the only one in Richland County that met their needs. They have a two million dollar compensation for their, they pay over two million dollars in salaries for their employees. And if they cannot get the property rezoned, they're probably going to have to leave the county and find somewhere else for their business. So we hope that because of the low risk of long-term effects and the high risk of negative impact if we lose them, that you all vote to rezone.
That's your time, ma'am. Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair, you're recognized. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second for approval.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Just for the benefit of any members in the community, they were kind enough to come to our rezoning town hall and answer a lot of questions about how they plan to use the property, which is essentially exactly the same way that they've been using the property. And, again, I take rezoning very seriously. We've had a lot of conversations, and just for the community, I want to reiterate that we've had conversations with the business, and that if the community wants to have additional conversations, wants to see them, learn more about what they operate, how they operate, that that door is open. And so for me, when I make a rezoning decision, one of the things that I do is I look at the request that's been made for rezoning, and I ask myself, as far as I'm concerned, what is the worst thing that could happen with this zoning? And does that fit in with this community? And the fact of the matter is that this property is already zoned general commercial, so it doesn't, it's already zoned general commercial. And so when I went down the long list of what is the difference in terms of things that they could do, the fact of the matter is that most, any use that they would, could do that would be more intensive than what they were doing now would actually require special exceptions or special permitting, and so nothing would be allowed outright without that coming back to the county to look at. And so what neighbors are going to notice as it relates to this property is really nothing, because they're going to continue using the property the same way. So just wanted to share that for the benefit of anyone who had questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Letho?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is six A three, case number twenty-five dash zero two four MA. Elisa Carter. Residential three to Light Industrial, eleven point eight seven acres. Starling Goodson Road. TMS number R two two zero one three dash zero one dash three seven. Planning Commission recommends disapproval, comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We have two individuals who signed up to speak. First, we have Mr. David Houston, Jr. Sir, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Hello, my name is David Houston. I live at two twenty Osprey Lane, Hockton, South Carolina. And I am against the rezoning on Starling Goodson for commercial truck parking. That's about it. I'm just against it. I wanna, I wanna say something, though. I don't really come to these meetings too often. I've been to several meetings. And I am from the Lower Richland area. I was raised up over there, okay? So I understand what some of the people are saying about it's a rural area. I understand about growth and development and all that. But I want you all to take into consideration, we do need to save some of our forests. We need the forest. It's a good, it's a good feeling when you can sit out on the patio or sit on the porch in the morning suns in our area and just hear the birds chirping while you're drinking your coffee, you know? See the squirrels jumping around, you know? So if you're taking all their homes away from them, they won't have nowhere to go. So just keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
I am against it.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Laurie Gregory. Ma'am, if you can approach the podium again and state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Good evening again. My name is Laurie Gregory, and I live at one oh eight Starling Goodson Road. And I am vehemently against this zoning for a truck stop. The, that road, Starling Goodson, is a short road. I walk that road in the morning time and in the evening. And I, we don't even have sidewalk there. We, it's residential area. We have kids that are, live in the housing areas that are there. But there's no sidewalks. And with the, already the given traffic, normal traffic on a normal day, causes some hazards for people walking, me, other kids. Kids, not other kids, but kids. But anyway, so it causes hazards. So, you know, a big old truck coming through there, we don't want that road damaged any further or any lives taken, because there's very little space there. And I don't wanna be walking down toward a truck stop and be mistaken for either a truck driver or something else. And I want it to be safe, a safe area for us to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Just stopped laughing at her comment. Move to deny.
Second. Motion and a second for denial?
If I could, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. You're recognized.
Again, we had a neighborhood public meeting about this as well. And this is a case where this is in a residential neighborhood. It is zoned residential. And so to switch from there to Light Industrial is just not a fit for the neighborhood. But I will say, for people who have concerns about truck parking in that area, it is not allowed or permitted in Richland County. And so the county and the Sheriff's Department are more than willing to work with any community members who want to report problems that they're having, because we wanna make sure that we're solving those for our residents. But this requested zoning is not appropriate at all for the residential community that it falls within. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion to deny approved.
Next is six A four, case number twenty-five dash zero two five MA. Jean Pierce. We have M one Light Industrial to General Commercial. One zero zero one Pinnacle Point Drive. TMS R one seven two zero five dash zero one dash zero eight. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan is compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item, ma'am.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
In the spirit of District Seven, we held a town hall meeting. Mr. Pierce and his team came and presented to the neighbors. And given that, I am moving to approve item number four.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is six A five, case number twenty-five dash zero two six MA. Robert A. Smith. Residential transition to corridor mixed use, three point zero one acres. Sixteen twenty-one Dutch Fork Road. TMS number R zero two four one one dash zero one dash zero three. Planning Commission recommends disapproval, comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We have two people who signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak. First, we have Mr. Paul Cumberland.
Good evening. My name is Paul Cumbers. I live at two two six Hunter's Blind Drive in Columbia, South Carolina. And I am voting in favor of the zoning change from RT to MU two. I represent Lighthouse for Life. We are a small nonprofit organization. We are the owners of those three acres. Lighthouse for Life is an anti-sex trafficking organization. We minister to women and girls in the community. And the sale of this property would go a long way. The proceeds of the sale of this property would go a long way to help us open our safe house for minors, for minor girls ages twelve to twenty-one. Currently, in the state of South Carolina, there are only two safe houses open for about four hundred children in our state who need a home, specifically those who are trafficked and exploited and sold for sex. So we would be very grateful if y'all would vote in favor of the zoning request that Robert Smith has put forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Rob Smith. Mr. Smith, if you can approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Yep. Madam Chair, distinguished counsel, thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Robbie Smith. I'm at one zero zero eight Indian Fort Road, Chapin, South Carolina. Paul has pretty much alluded to what we're trying to do. My business partner in this is George Somalis. He is the owner of Greek Boys. He had to attend a function tonight with his daughter. She's an actual dancer on the, at Carolina. And they had a mother-father family deal. But we're looking to, to put a multi-tenant unit, multi-tenant use building there. We want it to be low-impact. We want it to be, you know, in tandem, you know, with the community's expectations. You know, obviously, an amenity that, that they would be proud to have in their community. And I just hope that you guys will, will vote favorably for that this evening. And I'll just be short and brief and say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second for approval. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Just briefly, wanna make sure to note that the applicant had previously applied for General Commercial, which would have been a more expansive set of permitted uses. The Planning Commission actually recommended approval on that more expansive set of permitted uses. So I'm not sure why they voted for disapproval on MU two, which is more restrictive. But this is located on a five-lane portion of Dutch Fork Road. This MU two zoning fits in with the proposed commercial corridor that we've got in place for smaller-scale development through that stretch. And the property's surrounded by a church, and my understanding is the church is supportive of the application. So that's the basis for the motion to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is six A six, case number twenty-five dash zero two nine MA. Matthew S. Mungo. Homestead. Residential transition to Residential Two. Six point one five acres. East-South Point D Haven Road. TMS number R zero one three one one dash zero two dash one five, one six, twenty-two, and twenty-eight. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one person who signed up to speak, and that's Phil Bradley. Mr. Bradley, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Phil Bradley, two forty-five Foxport Drive. Unfortunately, Mr. Mungo couldn't be here tonight. He's out of town and asked me to stand in in case there was any questions. He is wanting to rezone to R two to stay in harmony with the rest of his neighbors in the community. If there's anything else, any questions? That'd be all.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Just very briefly, again, the proposal is in harmony with the lot sizes and the uses of the surrounding tracts of land. This is a property that the family uses as a gathering place at the lake. There's no intention to sell for any reason at this point, for anyone who's wondering. And that's the basis for the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We're at item number seven.
Move to adjournment.
Second. Motion and second for adjournment. Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.